Okay, I'd call the Monday, December 27th. Meeting to order. Is there any agenda additions or deletions? At the end of this, we do have scheduled a executive session personnel. So other than that, is there anything else? All right. Approval of the minutes of December 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody see anything?
What good to me.
Hearing none, all in favor, motion please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Road Commissioners Report.
Just one side.
Uh, just with the weather we've had, been a lot of ice, little bit of little snow been ongoing, but I have.
Anybody have any questions over the Road Commissioners?
Just one little thing. I know it's a hard time here to deal with it. Up on Pimple Hill, right in the middle of the road, there's one heck of a pothole where I had that thing this morning.
Oh.
You know, there's not much you can do, I know.
That's by the driveway?
Yeah.
Bernard, uh...
Yeah. Yeah, where the sheriff lived or lives, whatever the hell you know.
Yep. And got another one, I saw yesterday, two of them more.
Anybody else have anything else? Hey, thanks, Cass. Approval of SLUT board warrants, they're floating and drifting. Guys are looking at them. Uh, guests, do you have any comments? Nothing?
No, sir.
Okay.
I would advise the media some discussion, uh, an outside team might be warranted on, so, regards to ordinances and stuff like that, so.
There's a speed limit?
The speed limit ordinance, is that what you're...
Okay.
That's coming up.
Yep.
Yeah. I ask them to be here.
Good. All right, then, in that case, (laugh) speed limit discussion. Uh, the school sent back some...
Yeah, I put it in your folder.
Yeah.
In your SLUT board folder. I just printed up the email of their response to your guys' email.
Here's, uh... I could read this real quick, or you want to read it?
No, you read it.
Thanks. Uh, "Good morning, Katie. River Union School Board met last night and discussed the information presented by the town regarding Middle Road Speed Limit and signage. The feedback from the Board, the Middle River Board, was, one, the Board noted concern about the lack of enforcement of current speed limits and is curious regarding the town's intention in that regard. The Board feels that regardless of speed limit, enforcement is the key." I'm going to read down through these and then we'll discuss. "The Board does not believe that a flashing programmable sign will be an effective or feasible strategy if a speed limit change is made. The Board believes that the best approach that could be taken, if changes are indeed made by the town, would be to set the school's zone speed limit at 25 miles per hour and employ signage that clearly indicates the speed limit, tracks individual vehicle's speed, and flashing displays that speed for the driver to see clearly. Number four, the Board is of the belief that the town should consider in-state vendors if feasible. Number five, the Board loosely discussed the concept of Middle River School Board splitting such costs with the town based on previous precedent for a similar effect or effort in Wallingford. The Board is not interested in paying fully for any signage. That said, the Board did not commit one way or the other to that as its specific intention moving forward. More information and detail would be needed before making that decision at the Board level. And I hope this information is helpful. If any clarity is needed, please let me know. Thanks, Dave." This from David Younts. The, I think, let's talk about enforcement down there, so we get you information on public TV.
Sergeant Angel Cross, Sheriff's. Enforcement, we've been doing some, you know, I'm sure you've seen the report to announce and directed patrols. It is kind of hit or miss, you know, there's no denying that there are, the vehicles going too fast. Some days I can be there for a half hour, 45 minutes out around school time, and I don't get anybody more than four, five, six over. And there are days, like the other day, in 15 minutes, I had two of them in the range of 20 miles an hour over past the school, you know, and both of those were stops and both of those were tickets issued. So we are doing the enforcement when we can, and I try to be in that area during the dismissal times as much as possible. See, that's just not always possible at those, those times where calls depend.
What's your thinking on this flashing programmable light signs?
My personal opinion is they do have some benefit. I think there are some ways that they could be made more effective. For an example, I will give the sign entering Woodstock, Vermont. It has two little blue LEDs on the sides of it, and I'll tell you, I know it's there every time, and I'm within a couple miles of the speed limit, and I still slam on my brakes every single time. The general signs are effective, they work in general, but I, I think something like adding just the simple little strobes on the side in the blue color or something like that make them much more effective.
Now, this, the one that, for me, I go into West Side a lot, the one that starts flashing when, and then it slows down, slows down till you're doing the speed limit, could something like that work here?
It could, and that's right, they, they are effective. They, they keep the honest to honest. For those that aren't paying attention, it kind of brings their attention back to it. The issues are those that really aren't concerned with doing the right thing, it's not going to affect them, and that's where I've noticed some of the additions, like the little blue strobes, things like that. Now they're doing the right thing because it's, oh, is that a copper, is that a blue light, and, you know, so I, I think that, that little added bit is much more effective, but overall, any variant of them do, do aid.
Hmm. I, I don't know, for me, just one member, I'm thinking that either one of those two has suggested, I do go into Woodstock periodically, and that does come to your attention as you come up the hill there, all of a sudden, shh, shh, shh. So, you know, something like that, but how is that, you must know more about it than I do, how's that light, is that a battery, is that solar?
Usually as of, from my limited knowledge, um, there is an internal battery that has, usually there's a small solar panel on top, the solar panel charges the battery, um, and it runs, that, that way it runs through, I would say Walling, the one down in Wallingford is run that way, 'cause if we have a stretch of a couple of dark stormy days or things like that, by the end of the day, that one is not operating, you know, just because you can tell the battery's kind of worn down.
Yeah.
But for the most part, it's pretty effective.
The reason I ask that is, um, because of what they're indicating, or it sounds to me like what they're indicating, you know, they like the idea, but they don't want to spend a whole lot of money, you know, doing that, do you guys get that?
Sounds to me like they're open to potentially paying for half.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way I read it.
I, I do know in the past, um, and for example, in dealings previously with West Rutland, I know that the one on Main Street, they did utilize some grant money on that, I'm not sure which grant they went through. Last time I did speak to Lieutenant Gino on that, he believed that the grant that they used for that may have sunset and expired and is not available, but I'm not 100%.
Yeah, I spoke with Sandy and it's no longer available.
So, you know, that's something where, you know, there may be something under a safety grant or whatever, where sometimes those are covered, but I, I don't know which one specifically off the top of my head.
Now, the big question for me would be, would we have to put two signs, given that that's a north, south?
That would be a decision, obviously they're, they're single directional.
Yeah.
If you were looking at, for that effect, um, on both ends, then it would involve two.
Now, do you folks have any information relative to where we could find a vendor to get a price quote?
I could speak with Lieutenant Gino on that, um, and, see, I had spoken with him about being here tonight, but he ended up having another engagement, um, but I can speak with him on that, and I'm sure between him and his connections at the state level, they, I'm sure they have some vendors on file that would get you...
But I think for right now, so that we can also get a little note back to the school board, um, we're going to wait to get some more information, is that okay with you guys?
Yeah, I mean, Katie already had one vendor quote.
Yeah, that was from Kentucky, though, where we order our signs and the school board wanting something local.
Well, this would, this local, we might have...
I, I get it, but I'll tell you, for something like that, there's not a local vendor. I, I understand what they're saying, and this board has always had the policy to shop local first, I get that, but for something like this, you're not going to find a local vendor.
Well, that's the good, what comes up, so...
And do you think the school board is thinking all the time, or just...
They're suggesting all the time, which is the other part of this that we have to loop back around to, 'cause when the motion was made, this board made it that it was going to be only enforceable during school.
However...
I think I wanted it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you were the one nay on that.
Yeah, but I think after doing a little bit of this research, my opinion would be, as yours is, right, that if we're going to put these in there, put them in there all the time, because it's not, to me, it's not really being efficient to have the school constantly let us know, well, tonight we have a play going on, or something like this. So if it's, you know, that takes a little bit of stress out of it, out of the decision.
I don't believe we're going to assign somebody to keep changing that program either.
Yeah.
I can also state as far as that, we have had some issues dependent on who the judges are in the past with some of the limited timeframe speed changes, and we've had some, some difficulty in the prosecution end after enforcement with doing selective times and things like that.
And this is just a section of the Middle Road, not the whole Middle Road, so, um, we did have some, a neighbor come in and say, up on the northern part where the sharp turn is, where the bridge is up here, um, you know, they wished that we could lower the speed limit there as well, uh, but that wouldn't be anything where we would put one of these lights, this is...
Correct.
...school safety issue.
Correct, but with, with the school zone, um, in the past with some of the school zones where they only did it from like 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM or something like that, we have had some difficulties in the past with some of the traffic court judges and doing some prosecution on those styles, whereas if it's just that school zone section is a reduced speed, we have, to my knowledge, we haven't had any issues with.
And we more or less had the study, you guys provided that.
Yes.
So that if we went ahead with this, maybe two steps to put up some speed signs first, while we investigate, you know, getting one of these or two of these machines, um, I think that we're recovered and ready for that, we could put, you know, lower the speeds right there. Now, how would we go about that? Do we have to notify?
That would be a modification, well, there's, there's two ways. The first way in Vermont is you can just change the speed limit, but essentially it takes five years for it to become fully legal. If it's not challenged within five years, then it becomes considered to be ordinance law. The other option is for the Board to amend the town's speed ordinance, which would require a posting for 60 days.
Based...
You know, meet, you know, set it, post it for 60 days, if there's no issues to it, then the Board would have to meet, agree to adopt it and place it into effect, so once that second meeting after the 60 days and it was adopted, then change the signs and we're going to effect at that point.
I think that'd probably be the way we would go if we still consider this.
That, that's the most effective way in regards to enforcement.
It's what, 500, is it 500 feet each direction? Is that the way it...
I thought 200.
I thought it was 200.
So 200 each side of the driveway?
I think there are already, like, very old, other school signs up, like, the kids walking across.
But it has nothing to do with reducing speed?
No, but it's marking this, like, there's a school.
Marking the school zone for it.
There was somebody in that, uh, information that you guys gave us back in the engineering study or whatever you call it, there was somebody up over 100 miles an hour? I couldn't believe that when I was looking at that.
It, it is good information.
Yeah.
You know, it's a lot of information to sort through.
Yeah.
Very close together, it does give you kind of a good median.
That had to be on a motorcycle.
Well, very likely, um, I mean, I did learn a few, you know, looking through it for that week, every, between about 10 and 11, you know, there, there seems to be a pattern of some individuals coming through regularly in the high 50s, low 60s.
I hear them.
You know, so, you know, it is, it is a good tool to try and utilize both on your end for planning and on the enforcement.
Well, I think at this point, you know, and I really appreciate you coming down, Sergeant, but, uh, I think that for SLUT board, we should consider, um, first of all, seeing if we can get some information from your friend about the cost of these speed signs, and then, uh, let's go from there, but it may be a case of where we just, uh, adjust the, you know, post it, we're going to lower the speed limit just in here as a first step, but the information with, with, uh, getting those flashing signs and stuff, that would be helpful.
And, and I can speak from our side of it, what we generally do in that kind of a situation is we usually have what we call an education period. Um, you know, we would go in, we would try and spend some extra time in those areas, showing the presence, we'd probably increase motor vehicle stops, but you'd also see a higher percentage of warnings. You know, we'd just stop people, hey, not sure if you saw it, this was just changed, this is the new speed, tell your friends, make sure you're paying attention, and we would do that, usually it's around, once it would go into effect and be posted, we usually do that for, depending on what the town was looking for, you know, 30 to 90 day period, and then we would be looking to switch to more enforcement instead of an education situation.
All right, what do you think, Rick?
Well, when I first started in as a constable down here, I, I did the survey with, um, what was her name? Was it Underwood?
Sharon Underwood.
Sharon, was it her? Uh, and we did, we did the, all that stuff, and she told me that the mindset, and maybe you've heard this too, I think we have, um, the mindset of speed limits is, you put it at a certain speed limit, you gotta probably gain five miles per hour. Say, if you put, if you put it at 35, just, they're going to do 40. If you're at 40, they're going to do 45.
Fair.
Yeah.
Majority of the time.
Majority of the time, and then you got the ones that don't give a rip anyway. Um, I'm really, really, in my opinion, I'm for a statewide 35 mile per hour, or sit, townwide 35 mile per hour speed limit, with the sections of the 25 can remain the same. Just my opinion on that. Uh, I think there's some roads that, we've got a 35 mile per hour road right here, going up Walker Mountain Road, and that's an almost identical road down there on Alphrahia. Why is that one 40? That's a racetrack there.
Yeah, it is.
And that, that's one that I would say is up to the town, I can say, overall, looking back through, as far as, generally, we're looking at highway safety, so we're looking at crash stats, things like that. You guys actually have a pretty good track record as far as on the back roads, I mean, we get the ones every once in a while, like, not too long ago, we had the one up on Alphrahia where it went off the side and down under the bridge into the creek, and that was simply somebody just going way too fast. You're going to occasionally have those screaming eagles. In my experience, I would agree, a lot of the roads these sides would generally be around a 35-ish range. I'm not really seeing the crashes to say that I would recommend reducing it, where it's at seems to be working for the most part. Um, I know we've spoken on past meetings, um, you know, there are some things where it could be effective, you know, I've, I've mentioned Molten Avenue, you know, in the past, in my opinion, that should probably be a 25, you know, that's just my humble opinion, um, for what it's worth. So, and that would really simply be a preference of the Board on, on what they felt was appropriate.
What I've been seeing, especially this year, more so than others, is the number of bicyclists, okay, and runners.
Yes.
There was two runners today, I saw coming home, and they don't give a rip, they come right out in the middle of the道road. It's just a matter of time before somebody gets, you know, something happens. And at 40, going around the, especially the Creek Road, if you're doing 40 on that, it's going to happen. Maybe 35 won't help, but maybe it will.
That's a, in my opinion, that's a whole other conversation, townwide.
This little rectangle here is a highly used area for running and bicyclists.
Yes.
And, uh, short of actually stopping bicyclists, and which they do have regulations covering that, and it's ticketable.
It is.
You know?
And it wouldn't be the first time that I've done it.
Yeah. What do you think, Rob?
I'm not opposed to, um, a lighted sign with the strobes or whatever, and going to, I mean, it's, we're talking 200 feet each direction, with the summer program that's there, I understand that it's pretty rare that there's not stuff going on, but I, hearing that there's been enforcement issues, if it is an hour thing, that makes me change my mind a little bit, and, 'cause I was one of the ones that really was for a set time, and if, if that's going to turn into an enforcement issue, just do the 25 for the school zone, and just do it and be done with it.
One thing I will say along with that, obviously, and I teach all my deputies as they come through the FTO, is, you know, there is really not a black and white, and, you know, the violation really depends on the circumstances, and the example I give them all the time is Main Street, West Rutland, in front of the school.
Yeah.
At 11 o'clock on a Saturday night, if they're doing 10, 12, 15 over, is that too fast? Yeah, they, they likely to get stopped, but they're also likely to get a warning, it's not a real significant hazard. 2:30 on a Wednesday afternoon, they're getting a ticket.
Right, yeah.
You know, and so it really does boil down to the circumstances and the highway safety aspect of the day, the time, the circumstances of what is happening when that violation occurs. So even if it is a 24-hour, they might get stopped and, hey, this is 25, not 40, but if it's 10 o'clock on a Friday night, the, you know, it, it's a whole different ballgame than at 2:30 on a Wednesday afternoon when all the high school kids are pulling out of there and everything else, so...
For me, I, I think that we started this conversation with the school zone stuff, and I think that, um, we should really, you know, get some more information, uh, I definitely am in favor of putting up some signage anyway to lower that, that section, that's number one, but number two is, as Robby suggests, you know, to, let's see what we can do with getting some quotes and throwing some stuff up there.
What do you think, Bob?
I would go along with the, the lights, like Sergeant suggests, the strobes, yes, in Woodstock, they do show up, and they really catch your attention. I, I would be willing to go there, if you're talking just signage, I wouldn't want to see it go below 30 at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Because signs, people run by them and don't read them where these lights, they catch them.
Yeah.
You know?
They're going into Bridgewater and that area, that's the ones where they have the blue lights.
Yes.
Ah, they've raised that to over 30 now.
Did they?
Yeah.
Yeah. Woodstock was making too much money.
Yeah, but, no, I would, uh, really like seeing a little more investigation on the lights and the cost and what it would be, uh, what, uh, and some idea what maintenance would be over the years, you know, but, uh, let's start there, and then talk to the school a little more.
I was an advocate for having it in session at that speed limit, but after listening to Sergeant Cross with the enforcement and the legal aspect, I think I understood it right, that it can't really be enforced, per se.
It, it depends sometimes on the take of who that traffic court judge is and, you know, and the example I use is in Chittenden, um, on Chittenden, where they used to have the flashing light that said between this time and this time, and for quite a while, we, we had some issues winning some of those tickets in court because of the way that the judges interpreted.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and the judges change every few years, so it's, you know, it's not a solid standard that I can say, yes, it will, or no, it won't, but it is something in my experience we've had issues with in the past.
Therefore, I really hate to see it, but a full-time 25 mile per hour speed limit to that zone, or 30 to that school zone.
So, if we're thinking around the clock, 25 miles per hour, you'd also want the blue strobe lights?
Mm-hmm.
And are those the ones that like say how fast they're going?
Yeah, yeah, so it wouldn't be any more, we're talking, we're shifting now, instead of talking about just a light that blanks and says school zone, we're talking about one of those actual radar that registers speed, flashes at you if you're not doing the proper speed limit, and again, Woodstock is a great example, because they do, they have the ones with the blue strobes that go off if you are not doing what you're supposed to be doing.
But you're going to, we have to move on, but you're going to get us some information?
I'll talk with Lieutenant Gino and have him, get in touch with Katie with the information for vendors and things like that, that the state's used.
I really appreciate you taking the time to come down here and, this, you want to move into this, so...
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Sarge.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Do business. Health officer appointment.
Um, before we move on, do you want me to update the school board, or what would you want to add?
Yes, absolutely. Give them a brief, a brief synopsis, is that the word?
Something like that.
Yep. I must have heard that on TV. There you go. Okay.
Um, I know we're diving into this, Richard is willing to be appointed again?
Yes, he is.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint to the state, recommend to the state that Richard Griffith be reappointed as our health officer.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And just for the record, let me, uh, hi, this is a formal request to be reappointed as health officer for the Town of Clarendon for the year 2022. Uh, if you need anything additional, please let me know. Thank you, Richard Griffith. And, um, want to add, Chair of the SLUT board has to sign this.
Yeah, and it also says like a brief statement why you would like him to be reappointed, so I can write that in, but...
He's good.
He's done a good job, we need to reappoint him.
Okay.
Short and sweet. Short and sweet, yep. Uh, let's see. Uh, firework permit, do you want to read them? I think there's two in there.
Oh, there's two of them?
Yeah.
One? 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 One for Bronson Spencer Jr., I guess, and one for Evan Orvis. He's on Airport Road. Bronson Spencer's on, is it Elm Hill Drive?
Elm Hill Drive.
One is for New Year's Eve, one is for New Year's Day.
Is this the one that we've issued before to on Airport Road that we haven't had any problems with?
Yeah.
No, this is, Evan has called multiple times, um, but he's never shot fireworks off before. Um, he like had called and wanted to like send them off with ashes.
Yeah, that's, that's the guy come in here and
People's ashes?
For his, he came in for his father.
Yes, and he had like already done it.
Yep. So.
You put them to you there?
I'll send them up, Mike. Can we just, I'll just pick them up.
So he said that Airport Road one, they're gonna shoot them off in his backyard and there was a pool there that's filled with sand now underneath the snow. So that's what he. I told him the conditions of the permit and he was fine with them.
What's it due down then, Mike?
One of them's Friday and one of them's Saturday.
Okay.
Your notice.
Were these received in the proper amount of time?
Um, Evan called today and, um, let's see.
Cause we're supposed to have them two weeks in advance.
Yeah.
I got an email from
I can tell you that when the fire chief was doing them, it was very strict. If they were not in, if they were not in 14 days in advance, they were not issued.
Right.
And I don't know as if that's a precedent we want to change.
Nope.
Well, I would say that was, that would be my fault because I haven't been saying you need to get them here for, before 15 days.
I thought it said right on the paperwork that they have to be in.
So to meet the guidelines for today's meeting.
Where do they, where do they get this from?
That's what Matt gave me.
Is it posted on the website though, or is it?
They just, I asked them for the information and I fill it out.
In this case, probably, let me make this suggestion. Let us okay these. And then what we do is we'll get to whoever is issuing these things to let the folks know that they now, that our policy, and we can put the policy.
Minimum of 14 days in advance?
Yes.
So it's not spelled out on that paper there?
No.
No.
Oh.
No launching of human remains.
We had that discussion last year. I thought it was.
Yeah. At July 4th.
We did, never got followed through that.
No. On July 4th is when we had the discussion. Uh, because somebody, yeah, where was it? On Airport Road?
Yeah, I think so.
That where they wanted to set that. And that's when we started saying, well, you know, we want notification prior to.
Yeah.
And so in this case.
So, yeah, Ann emailed me on the 20th. But like I would take responsibility for that because I haven't been enforcing that. I've just been putting it to the nearest select board meeting.
But, but let's, but let's have a written thing right on the, I don't know.
I can make a post like for the website with the permit and send it to you guys.
But for the time being, we have these two folks in there. Uh, I was asked for a motion to okay these. But then going forward, once Katie has it posted, then we'll stay with, you know, as you're suggesting, two weeks prior to notice.
Yeah, I would say going forward, we want, I want to be on top of that, two weeks.
Yeah, because we talked about that last year and I, I really thought it got done and put in somewhere, but maybe I missed something.
I, I think Matt had just told us that maybe. I don't know if that.
You, you know, you, you could, real quick, look at the, our site or maybe.
I'm looking at the website right now and there's nothing on fireworks.
Okay. Well, there will be. Let us go forward with that. Okay, Katie?
Yeah.
And you have to make it obvious fireworks permit. And this is the permit, we can make a copy of this. And at the bottom, put, uh, it has to be two week prior notice to the select board. Or does anybody want to make a motion? To do these? Doesn't sound like it.
I'm just concerned about the past ones. Did we turn somebody down in the past?
If we've had issues, we have.
Yeah.
Just with issues.
We've had issues.
But not on a timestamp date.
The last.
I'll make a motion except for these two only and have the correction done.
Notification on the website. Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Um, I think because we haven't formally posted all this stuff, these people are doing the right thing by coming in and requesting. So I think that we should consider passing that motion made by Cash.
I would, I would go along with it, being absolutely sure that it gets onto the request, permitted request going forward, the two week notification.
Mm-hmm. Have any comments, Rob?
No, I would agree. Going forward, that needs to be fixed.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. We'll call a motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone oppose? Okay. You got that all, Katie?
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. And, um.
Got a timeout.
Yeah. And I, I'll sign those. And there's a, our meeting schedule, we're gonna post that around town?
Yeah, I can get that.
Yeah. Unless we approve it. Has everybody, technically, has everybody looked at the?
I didn't send that out. I didn't.
No, it hasn't been, where is it?
I was hiding it.
I don't believe there's any Monday holidays this year or next year. But feel free to double check.
Yeah, if only possible, I'd like to think of, well, the Valentine Day would be the only one, only holiday.
Do you want to go to Wednesday on the week of Valentine's Day? I know, I know somebody in the room would highly recommend we go to a Wednesday on the.
I might go out dinner.
That's so funny.
That's pretty observant.
Well.
She wasn't second on there, right?
Might be a wise decision.
I could always look up the football schedule for next year.
We're gonna be good, we're gonna be good for the August one, right? All right?
Yeah, that was the other one. We weren't sure when Fair Week was.
I'm getting there. I'm almost there.
The week of the 15th. It'd be the third Monday.
Fair Week's not an issue.
Right.
12th, 26th.
Uh, Columbus Day might be.
And, uh, yeah, uh, so you would, we would meet on Columbus Day, which I don't think, we've traditionally met on Columbus Day. I don't think.
Doesn't matter.
That's not an issue.
Don't think there's been an issue there. So with the one change, I'd make the recommendation that the February meeting go to the 16th instead of the 14th. But other than that, we approve it? I'll make that a motion.
Second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Do we, before we?
Those go in here.
Yeah. But did you guys want any recommendations from the select board relative to these stand-up tables?
No, it's just that she's gonna fill out the paperwork and ask for approval when the grant gets filled out.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Scattered some different quotes. That wasn't like a, you had awarded or anything.
All right. Heidi, do you have anything you wanna report?
Just that we're at the tail end of wrapping up budget.
Katie, do you have anything you wanna report?
Um, so Mike and I were supposed to receive an email from the Treasury about setting up our portal and confirming our account for the ARPA funds. Um, so Mike and I will be working on setting up that portal, confirming our account because the first reporting is due April of 2022. But really, there's no action being taken right now beyond setting it up.
So did, are you prepared to do that tomorrow at some point, or do you want to wait till next week?
Um, it may be better to wait till next week so that you can have Adam help you out.
Yep. Sounds good to me. All right. Anything else, Katie?
That's all.
All right. Uh, at this time. Rick, do you have any concerns?
None.
Uh, Rob?
Just hope everybody had a Merry Christmas and going into the new year. Wish everybody a Happy New Year.
I got you, dude.
Happy New Year.
I'm good.
Same as Robert.
With a new year coming in, everybody drive safe. Watch for the snowplows.
All right.
Make a motion that we enter into executive session to discuss a personnel matter for no specified time limit.
Give a second to that?
Back up.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?